All right. So, you ready, Mark? Awesome. So, good evening. Today is January 27th and today it's actually the Groton Board of Education meeting. And our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. LeFay, would you be willing to, where is, it's right over here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. And we do have a recognition, the person is not here. And so, my commitment is that if she should show, we will then go right into the recognition of that. All right. I'm now moving on to the comments from citizens, which is the agenda items and other subjects that concern that lie within the jurisdiction of the Board of Education. This is the portion of the agenda where the Board welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Board members will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and cannot respond during this portion of the citizen, portion of the Board meeting. And citizens should make their presentation from the podium and state their names and addresses for the record. Ms. Joan, did we have anyone that signed? Is there anyone that would like to offer some comments? Hearing none, we are going to go past that one and response to the comments since there is no one to comment. And we're going to go into my favorite part. Addie, the student representative report.
Hello. Unfortunately, our junior representative, Zay, couldn't be here tonight, so I will be taking all of the points. And I'll also be talking about the middle school and elementary schools tonight because they've sent in information on updates on their school. So, we'll get a full, a full thing about that tonight. Starting with updates from last meeting. Midterms were completed today, Monday, January 27th. So, this marks the end of the second quarter and the closing of semester one. And More Than Words in Amphora had a diversity dinner on January 10th. Students were able to bring in food from their culture and perform in an open mic. And that was a lot of fun, I was able to be there. For class council updates. Seniors are finishing up a chocolate bar fundraiser and are also planning for the annual Mr. Falcon, which we're very excited about. And juniors are preparing to buy snack boxes for a fundraiser. They are also starting to plan for their May 9th Mother's Day breakfast and for junior prom, which is scheduled for May 16th. Sophomores and freshmen are both continuing to plan and brainstorm fundraisers. Moving on to More Than Words. More Than Words is currently working with the administration and staff to schedule future professional development days at Fitch and opportunities. And there will also be an upcoming full More Than Words meeting in February, where the More Than Word groups from New London and Ledger all get together to discuss future opportunities and different things they can implement at their schools. Moving on to student section at Fitch sports games. This is a very interesting thing. So, the seniors, Max Grossman, Molly Breznerhan, and Will Miner have taken charge to kind of organize a student section for the boys' basketball games. And this is exciting because we've usually had less, less people go to the away games. And we've gotten a lot of compliments recently on how big our student section is at these games. So, these students have created social media accounts to notify students on upcoming games and have also created different themes for each event. For example, the next game is on Tuesday, January 28th. The varsity boys' basketball is playing against East Lime. And the student section is encouraged to wear Fitch gear. Moving on to Trium Music Honor Society. So, Trium is putting on Fitch's Got Talent, which is a talent show where students can show their special skill or talent. And it's in the style of America's Got Talent, the reality show. And the show will be held on Friday, March 6th at 7:00 PM in the Fitch High School auditorium. The Fitch Drama Club has casted their production of The Addams Family and has begun rehearsals. That will be very exciting to see how they make that happen and will be able to go when they come up with that. And then for Fitch athletic updates. On January 25th, the Fitch Chilling Varsity Division won second place at a competition and the JV Division won first place. The girls' basketball fell to East Lime 49 to 34 on January 24th. The boys' basketball defeated Woodstock Academy 49 to 44 on January 24th. And the team is now undefeated 11 to 0, which is very exciting. And on January 22nd, wrestling defeated Bacon Academy 66 to 12. Moving on to middle schools and elementary schools. Starting with Charles Barnham. Barnham participated in the Winter Strings Concert, but postponed the band and chorus concert until January because of the snowstorm. Students can participate in a wide variety of winter clubs at Barnham. Some of the clubs that are available are the Cuban Club, Playmaker Club, Morning Ender Soccer, Hiking Club, Winter Sports Club, and also the opportunity to write poetry. And staff will be participating in team building activities, including playing beach volleyball at the sandbox during a February afternoon session. From Mary Morrison, Mary Morrison School hosted author Phil Buildner as an author in residence on Friday, January 10th. Phil was a public school teacher in New York City and has written many books, including picture books and series and also a book called Rip and Read, that series that Mary Morrison fifth graders have been enjoying. Our teachers and students in grade three to five enjoy a very energetic and enthusiastic presentation on what it is like to be an author. And the fifth grade workshop will also include a focus on writing. Mary Morrison is also celebrating a community-wide ribbon cutting officially opening the school-based health center. This is a comprehensive primary care facility located on the grounds of the school and they are licensed by the Department of Public Health as outpatient or hospital satellite clinics. Our new SBHC assures that all of our students, particularly those that are uninsured and underinsured, have access to comprehensive health and preventative services needed to be healthy in school and ready to learn. Moving on to Westside STEM Magnet Middle School. Throughout January, the seventh graders have been participating in the Young Manufacturers Academy during some of their science classes. This program offers hands-on STEM activities and is sponsored by the Connecticut Center for Advanced Technology. Also, both the girls' and boys' basketball teams are into their seasons. The boys are currently undefeated. Auditions for Hairspray Junior took place on January 8th. Algebra I midterm exams are scheduled for January 28th. Sports day is scheduled for January 31st. And students will be encouraged to wear their favorite sports hat or jersey and donate $1. Funds raised on this day will also help build the Miracle League field in East Lime. Westside has received excellent news from the state in early January, finding out that their physical fitness scores, particularly in grade eight, had exceeded the state average. And our advisory groups will meet every Friday. And we're challenged with collecting canned and non-perishable foods for the Malta Homeless Outreach Organization. They were able to collect a large number of donations from their students and it has been donated to Malta's food pantry. For Claude Chester, Claude Chester has expanded the school garden. The after-school club called Sprout Scouts painted the garden beds which brighten up the place. Claude Chester is hoping to create an outside teaching space within the garden area as well as explore the concept of making a smart garden. Claude Chester has provided 186 breakfast bags to students who signed up over the December break. And Claude Chester is in the middle of a kindness challenge. Whenever student, staff, or teachers demonstrate kindness, a heart is colored in on a hundredths chart, which are posted in every room and office. The charts will be shared and celebrated at the February whole-school morning meeting. For, um, sorry, the Northeast Academy Arts Magnet School. The fourth grade drama production of The Grinch was a huge success. Two performances were held for families in the community. One performance was held for the entire school audience. Next on the docket is the fifth grade play, which we will be casting in the near future. Mr. Chaney, Mrs. Stevenson, the strings teacher, and Ms. Manacho, sorry, the art teacher, will be joining two fifth grade students, Alina Ahmed and Angelia Scott, at the 21st Annual Elementary Celebration of the Arts at the Aqua Turf in Southington on February 11th. This Connecticut Association of Schools event is meant to recognize students at the elementary level with outstanding ability in the performing or visual arts. And then finally, Mary Morrison, Mary Morrison, oh, sorry, that was actually already done. Okay. That was the whole thing. I hope you got a full picture of everything that's happening.
Thank you very much. And that is helpful because what's nice is, is that sometimes we do get the school calendars, but it's really nice to have it on, on TV that people can see that we are actually a very active school community. So, thank you, Addie. Any comments? Lee?
I was planning on going to the basketball game tomorrow. If anybody wants to go, I would try. I didn't know there was going to be a special cheer section.
And you need to wear your Fitch gear, too.
When you're 11 and 0, people start to pay attention.
Right.
We have, we have a young man, a child who plays eighth grade basketball for us, who is six foot four. And we're, we're looking forward to him.
Very much so. Transitioning to the high school.
Exactly. So, the eighth grade basketball prospects are looking up, literally.
Any other comments from the student report? If not, we're going to move on to superintendent and administrative reports. Dr. Grineer.
Well, I just wanted to give a little bit of an update on the middle school. Sam is going to talk about the facility. But I just wanted you, the board to know, we are, today, we're about two weeks away from finalizing the schedule at, at the, at the middle school. It is a brand-new schedule that Susan and I will brief the board on and soon as it gets ready. And we're talking to the faculty about it as well. There's been a team that's worked. It's quite remarkable, actually. Thirty, forty hours a week. It's, it's to get every child registered into each of these various elective classes, plus all the core classes. We're working on the staffing. We, Laurie, Susan and I, Laurie Lapine, Susan and I are working on that. And we also have set up a series of outreach, initially to the faculty and then to the parents. And Addie and the More Than Words group will be bringing in next year's seventh graders to do a kind of a student workshop on what needs to be done to make sure the school is a success.
Can I just add that, in addition, we have on our website, the Groton Middle School. So, we have a whole area on the website devoted to this. So, that's where course catalogs will go, that's where the letter that's going home will go. So, all that pertinent information will be right there at parents' fingertips. And we're actually going to send out basically an interest survey so that they'll have a chance to go through the catalog with their kids and be able to pick those things that can be selected. And they'll know what are the core things that are already input. So, we're really excited about using that site. And you guys can go on it, too. So, it's a work in progress, but it will be ready probably by next week.
Great, thank you.
And Sam is going to give some facility details, but I just want, I spoke to Rick Norris a little bit before the meeting tonight. And he, he explained to me that because of all the sheet rock work that was done this weekend, begun this weekend, he believes by Friday, the sheet rocking in the academic part of the building will be finished and they'll start painting. So, we are coming down the homestretch on schedule, on budget. And, you know, those are, those are four words that you like to hear when you have
Nice.
Nearly a million-dollar project going on. But that's it for me.
Okay. And then Susan, for the assistant superintendent.
Okay. So, I just have, before I turn on the PowerPoint, I just wanted to give you what they call the ESSA milestones for Groton Public Schools. So, in order for us to make that yearly progress, the tracker tracks how we're doing. And we meet with people from the State Department. And so, everything from our DPI or our indicator for ELA in math to our, our growth, which we've talked a lot about, to our EL support in lost links, all the way to chronic absenteeism. So, I wanted to give you this chart so you could understand how we're being held accountable.
So, while you're setting up, so this is a function of being an alliance grant, if I understood correctly. And by virtue of, of being an alliance district, we, we have to report these, report these scores. So, the first one is the District Performance Index, which is a combination of several, several variables. So, I'm, I'm actually seeing this for the first time. So, so nineteen twenty.
So, just to start, you remember two years ago when we were first announced as an alliance district, we were given $600,000 to put towards our plan. Last year, we did not receive any funding, but we still continued to plan from the year before, not as comprehensive, but, and keeping track of the data as indicated to make those yearly, you know, increases and, or decreases in the case of absenteeism. So, this is really the wording from the State Department of Education that the Alliance District Plans are locally conceived, evidence-based reform plans that propose detailed initiatives for improving student achievement. So, I'm going to show you, you've seen the, the four quadrant parts of the alliance. And as I said, talent is the number one, or the first one that we have talked about. And I had told you that they have boxes that you check off and I'll make sure that you all receive this. But the recruitment and human capital is part of this, hiring and placement, professional learning, evaluation, instructional coaching, and district school leadership development. And in ours, I really wanted you to see what went into the actual plan that I had to submit to the state because they have to look at it, authorize it, and I, and I think Tuesday, tomorrow, I should hear something. And once they've done that, the funds are ready for us. And of course, we'll be sharing that information with other colleagues in the town. But professional learning for instructional leaders, this is really, as part of our sustainability plan that some of our other grants have initiated. We want to continue with the leadership that we have within our buildings, whether they're teacher leaders or administrators, to, to ensure that the plans will continue to roll out and so that they're given the professional development that they need in order to ensure that that happens. Recruitment and human capital, recruiting high-quality staff is ever so important. Increasing minority hires and Laurie Lapine has come to you. She has quite a comprehensive plan that we have going on the central office. And she has teams that are working in the state, at the state level, and within the district to support the hiring of a more diverse staff. And we'll expand the strategies we've talked about, recruiting a diversified staff and the Grow Your Own Scholarship programs for some of our paraprofessionals that may want to go back and get their teaching degree. And they have you do a rationale, so there's a rationale behind that of really creating a more diverse teaching staff. District and school leadership, hire and retain highly qualified teachers. So, we have a plethora of team mentors that really support our new teachers. And they are paid a stipend and, but they also have to receive training. So, we have, I think, at least a dozen new team mentors who are getting training that this grant will help support, or these funds will help support that. And so, here's the talent section. I think we've kind of gone through that. Grow Your Own Tuitions is under the benefit section in talent. Understanding Bias Training is part of it and that's actually coming to our professional development. We have Valerie coming back and I'll make sure you get invited if you'd like to come for our March 13th date. Other professional services under teacher leadership and is 10,000 in mentor training for those team, expansion of team teachers. And then also minority recruitment that we'll use to kind of advertise. And that whole section for talent is worth $55,000. Under academics, we're looking at Common Core Assessment, SRBI. And SRBI, I want to highlight here, those are our intervention practices. We have very good practices at each school, but we want to make sure we have systemic practices. So, what's happening in the elementary that's really good that we want all elementaries to have? What's happening at the middle school, because it's going to become one middle school, so they really need to work together and create this thing. And then what's happening at the high school to ensure that our children that need supports are getting the right supports? So, SRBI and special.
Excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt, but is there a handout on this?
This is actually part of the plan that I had to submit to the, to the State Department. So, I will make sure that you receive that.
So, I think it's good that you can continue to do that so that it can get taped. But to, just to understand that.
We have nothing to look at.
That we're not seeing, that we're not seeing anything. And we didn't get it in advance.
Well, it was done this weekend. Because it was, it was a, you know, we couldn't, I couldn't open it up online, so I had to do it this way.
Oh, wow.
At any rate, so the SRBI and special supports in the way of bringing people together and paying them over the summer to put together this comprehensive plan is part of the funds that we'll, we'll work on. Also, to sustain our pre-K through 12 literacy initiatives, delivering that Common Core curriculum and adding to the pre-K where the units of study are coming out now to continue that support and the initiative and the classroom library. So, that's all part of the ELA component.
And how much is devoted?
I'm going to get to that, Rita. I'm going to get to that on the second page.
Oh, all right.
Instructional technologies, college career readiness, and SRBI. So, we need to expand the use of our school and district data teams and to examine and analyze current data. And we also have to provide software, professional development, and inquiry instructional materials to support the core and the tiered instruction. So, when we look at that sheet, now you all have seen the sheet multiple times. The other pages are just to explain the thinking because you have to explain the thinking and then you have to write SMART goals based on that ESSA to show how this is going to make measured growth and what the expectation is. So, the SRBI writing is $10,000 for teachers K-12 to work together. We also have an EL teacher, which we're going to hire hopefully as soon as possible for the rest of this year, so for semester two. In the secondary level is where we need it. We also need some analysis support with the academics and the requirements on this alliance district plan to be able to do the tracking. And then there are professional services related to aligning the Common Core. There are also inquiry-based implementation of PD. So, looking at, you know, making sure that teachers get the kind of professional development around Common Core expectations. And then the supplies or software for SRBI, expanding the libraries and math materials related to the National Science Foundation. And so, that part, the academics part is probably our biggest chunk in the area of $244,000. Culture and climate, this is where we're looking at the attendance and the chronic absenteeism, the suspension rate, wraparound services, and family engagement. And the first bullet is around family engagement and expanding the work of our community coordinators to assist in that family engagement piece and to help implement or have the principals implement the SRBI interventions. Family engagement, wraparound services, this is where we've asked for another social worker at the secondary level, namely the middle school, to help support students who have attendance issues, students who might have family issues or have academic problems and, you know, anyone in between. So, to have that extra support. Family engagement, community forum and conversation. We had started six years ago our Healthy Development Summits on mental health. We will continue and hope to have one this spring. I was just talking to Children First Groton and Whole Collaborative of townspeople to talk about what that topic might be, but really an outreach to the community regarding student success. And there's some nominal expenses in there for that. So, community coordinators for 9,000, social worker, the whole salary, health insurance, and then community forum, $1,500. And then with operations, we really are looking at the data support, the grant management, and tutoring. So, tutoring, and I don't know why that slide didn't take because I put that in there. But the tutoring is, and I shared with you a list of each of the schools and what their plan is. But basically, it's around reading and writing and math and science. And to give before or after-school intervention so that we can expand in after-school for the middle school and high school where there's a late bus is very convenient. So, it could be around some S-BAC topics that kids may need. It could be around what they're studying currently. And I know that the teachers will make it engaging as well. But it's that extra tutorial, which we hear community members ask for often. And the question was raised by our Board of Ed when we originally did it. Can we provide additional funds? So, originally, it was about half this amount of money. And now, we've gotten it to $17,500 and we're able to reduce the benefit portion. So, thank you, Rita. We were able to do that. And then there's supplies needed for tutoring. And the other big component here is the registration and lottery software that will tie into Power School, that will enable families to be able to enroll at home or online or even at the office online. And there will be efficiencies and accuracies with this new system. And then the refreshment of the projection devices. And we talked to you about making sure that we have those, starting with the high school, which has been in serious need. These new active panels, putting them in the libraries of each of our schools, but they'll be portable so they can go room to room and we can take them with us when we have new schools. So, Dennis has created a plan for that. So, the entire amount comes to 600,000. And I think it's a really good plan and.
And you said that you're going to hear tomorrow, hopefully tomorrow, about whether the state has said, yep, you've got a plan.
And sometimes they'll say, it's fine, but you need to shift this or do this or, you know, maybe a different category for equipment versus supplies, so. But I'm thinking it's, you know, it's a good plan, so.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I think, once again, it'll be helpful once we, once you send the PowerPoint so then we can kind of do that. And one of the reasons why, I know people are saying, but can we, talked about this in the committee of the whole when we went over the Alliance District, why, why aren't we doing it? And I just, because this is such a big thing for us at the present moment, I just thought that it was, be important for at least to also be on, on camera so that other people can, because they, people are hearing Alliance, Alliance, Alliance. And so, there's now a sense of what that is. And you made reference to the fact, and I know it was in our board notes, is that you are going to go tomorrow to talk to the town council around the, how the board supports the use of the 600, the $600.
Dr. Grineer and I will be there.
That's also going to happen tomorrow and it was in the notes. I have a question, if that is possible. Yes, it is possible for me to have a question. But I am just wondering, could you explain this? Because it makes unfortunately no sense to me. And what I'm the most confused about is not the color yellow, but what are the, what are the yellow boxes?
So, those are like benchmarks. So, back in 1617, when we first began this journey, you see that in ELA, we were at 68.1 for ELA for their DPI, which is District Performance Index. And in math, 63.3. And if you go to 2021, which is the next yellow box, the expectation is that we go up a couple percentage points in the DPI.
Does it mean that in the DPI on 2019 through 2020, that our benchmark was 69.7?
That's for 23, no, where are you looking?
I'm, I'm at ELA. I, I'm, I'm at ELA, the first column, twenty-nineteen-twenty.
Well, that is their expectation.
That is their expectation.
That is their expectation.
This is not, this is not what we have done.
If we're to get, their expectation is that everyone in Connecticut, every town is, their average is seventy-five by twenty-nine-thirty.
Okay.
So if we're to get there, they're setting these benchmarks, which, you know, we, we're not there yet, even at the benchmark, but the benchmarks are the expectations in order to get to seventy-five.
So can I ask one more question on, on, I'm going to ask another question on this. So when it, the District Performance Index, the Smarter Balance Growth, the LAS Links, the Chronic Absenteeism, four-year adjusted cohort graduation rate, the six-year adjusted cohort graduation rate, and the Accountability Index, those are the things that got the thirty-two, thirty-one-
Districts.
-school districts into the, the-
Alliance.
Alliance District, is that correct?
That's right.
One of the, not all of these indicators necessarily, but something stood out.
Okay.
That, and socioeconomic of the towns have a lot to do with it, too.
And that this, this document that you gave us for, a, a abbreviated document-
Right.
That you did the PowerPoint, that is our response to some of the indicators that we are, that got us-
Right.
On the Lions.
In order to receive the Alliance funds, we needed to come up with a district plan.
Got it.
And it's really an Alliance application that you're applying for those funds. It was kind of sent to us late, later, like over the Christmas holidays, so it was, um, an action plan that we've been discussing, so hope, luckily, we were kind of ready to go with our ideas, but then it took some work putting that plan together.
Okay.
And I just shared out with you kind of the big ideas of the plan and the rationale, but I'll make sure you get it.
Thank you very much.
Rita?
Um, and, and where are, do we have a chart, chart for Groton scores that line up with the state's expectations?
These are their benchmarks for us.
Right.
Um, and I've certainly given you out the data, but I could make another column of where we actually are.
I, I think-
That's what I have to do for the state.
Yeah, I think that would be really helpful.
And in the tracker. Yep, I can do that.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Any other questions? Alrighty. Thank you again, and, and once again, the more that you talk about it and what was helpful for me-
It makes the world of thinking.
It, it, it is, and, um, I, I really do appreciate your willingness to kind of, because I know that you've been, you've been sinking a lot of time into it, so I really appreciate you willing to, to share again with us. Um, we're now going to move on to the Business Manager Report, just because we haven't seen you enough lately. We just thought we would.
It's good to see you again.
Yeah, and again, and again.
So Attachment One is our updated Object Code Summary Report. Uh, this report shows that we are, have a projected unexpended balance of eighty-four-thousand-five-hundred-ninety-three dollars. Uh, it's made up primarily of, uh, we're, we are over budget in salaries, as we discussed in previous, uh, meetings, uh, but it's offset by being under budget in, uh, essentially our tuitions and our supply accounts. Um, and we, we, we feel we will, uh, we, we should be able to hit these numbers, so we're, we're in very good shape.
Is the supply account, is that because we've just have said we can't spend the money?
Uh, well, it's, it's a combination of, uh, we have supplies from prior years that we're still working through, uh, so we're, we're in good shape there, um, and, um, both from, uh, instructional supplies as well as custodial supplies, so we're, we're in good shape. But we are asking the principals to hold back twenty-five percent of their site budgets until we get further along in the year, we know that we'll, we'll be able to hit this number.
I, um, I had a question last week when we did the COW, when we did the budget. Um, and someone asked a question, because this is not the strongest, my strongest suit, but usually we do the parentheses for being under budget, but a couple of times, there was a minus instead, and I didn't want to sound stupid, but now I'm feeling stupid because there was a high, there was a, a dash.
Oh, yeah, um, in, in the, in the budget work, uh, work papers?
Yes, yes.
So it should be, it should be a parentheses, um, if it should not be a negative number.
I wonder, was it for money or staff? Because sometimes we say minus-
You know, I don't remember right now, but-
Because we wouldn't put staff in parentheses, it'd only be for numbers.
No, it wasn't.
Yeah.
It was in the-
It should have been.
Right corner.
We'll, we'll check it.
I'll check it, too.
Yeah, and if you tell me the exact spot, I can tell you exactly what, uh-
Thank you.
But, but parentheses mean, uh, negative.
That's great, yes.
No.
Yes.
Parentheses is negative.
Parentheses is good.
Negative.
Or in the case of a budget, that we're, we're under budget.
Uh, over budget.
Oh, well, over budget, right.
Yeah, it's over budget.
We don't have under budget.
Which is good. Thank you, sorry.
No, no.
All right, do you have the health insurance report?
Uh, so in regards to health insurance report, no, I do not have an updated health insurance report. MDG, uh, they were reconciling our prior year, uh, claims to, uh, to report from Anthem, and they noticed some discrepancies. Uh, so it turns out that the claims information, the reports that we've been going over from, that come from Anthem and get processed by MDG, um, have been inadvertently, uh, leaving off certain groups. Uh, so this was a concern, uh, and, uh, Anthem and MDG have both been looking into it. I got a report back just the end of last week, uh, that it, uh, the, the groups that were left off, it affects the town side more than the board side, but there is some effect on the board side. Um, so they are reworking those reports, uh, as we speak, um, and we hope, we'll definitely have one for the next meeting, but, um, uh, they were under reporting on the reports only. So the actual, actual activity, it was all working correctly, but on these reports that we're looking at, uh, they were under reporting by, by two groups for the, for the board and five groups for the town.
Any questions about that? Jay, you look pensive.
So, none of the reports that we've received since, um, last July were accurate?
Correct. Yeah, there, there were groups that were, um, erroneously not reported.
Were, were claims left off? In other words?
Off the reports only, so as far as, uh, the, the actual calculation-
So if we think we're three-hundred-seventy-eight thousand dollars to the good, are you saying we're still three-hundred-seventy-eight thousand dollars to the good, but the report didn't include, the numbers were okay, but the, but the reporting groups were inaccurate?
No, the, it did not include some reports.
Oh.
Uh, I'm sorry, some, uh, some groups.
Some groups.
Uh, small groups, luckily, for the, for the board's sake, uh, small groups, but it did, it's going to have a-
It could have been, well, if they were left off, then we would have paid more claims.
That's right.
And I think Jay's point is that we, we had an elevated sense, an accurately high sense of how much, uh, to the good we were.
That's right, yeah. It was overly optimistic.
Yeah, that was my concern.
But, but I was assured that it's not, um, it's not large numbers, but I don't have the actual numbers at this point.
Okay, but not alarming.
Not alarming.
Thank you for giving that qualification, Lee.
Everyone's looking at our faces.
I, I think what's alarming is when, when Ken says, you know, you're eighty-four thousand right now, which is what? If my math is correct, is that one-tenth of one percent? So I mean, you're like on a razor's edge to begin with.
Right.
The, the impact for that will be felt in the, in the reserve, basically.
Mm-hmm.
But if we had to fund more, then yes, it could, it could affect this, but I don't, I don't believe it's going to have an effect.
Okay.
Okay.
As soon as we get that report, we'll put it in board notes, and then we can-
Yes.
Make a, a full report at, at the February meeting.
That'd be great. Thank you. Um, Director of Buildings and Grounds?
Good evening. Uh, I'll report on the Groton twenty-twenty, uh, and so I'll, I'll report on all three projects that are ongoing at this time. Uh, the Groton Middle School, as Dr. Grenier alluded to, um, they actually brought in about fifteen to twenty extra sheet rockers this past weekend to, uh, to knock out the sheet rock, and they really did a, a bang-up job.
Literally?
And they're actually, and, uh, you mentioned that they're going to be painting, they, they are actually painting, uh, some of the sheet rock, uh-
Oh, really?
Uh, as well, so that project is, uh, moving along well, as you can see when you drive up the street. Everybody I run into says, wow, that's really an impressive building, and, uh, I have to agree with that. Um, we will be going, uh, to Hartford, the group will be, uh, heading to Hartford again on February twenty-sixth for Phase Three, which is to the OSCGR, uh, to get permission to move forward with FFNE and, uh, technology. And FFNE is furniture, fixtures, and equipment, so, uh, we'll, we'll take a look at that stuff and, uh, be ready for that meeting on the twenty-sixth for the state. Um, I, we also have a meeting this, uh, coming Wednesday morning with Dagostino, who is the, uh, security consultant, um, that doing the cameras and all of that stuff at, at the school. Along was our consultant, Bill Letson, uh, and the police department, and we'll be talking about, uh, the security issues, uh, with the, uh, new middle school, so hopefully finalizing that on Wednesday morning. Uh, regarding the Cutler Site, uh, on January fifteenth, we had a pre-bid meeting at, at Cutler. Uh, I had asked, uh, Principal Bass for a room that would hand, uh, could handle thirty, uh, contractors. Uh, there are closer to sixty contractors there, so I'm hoping that that might mean we might get it for half price if there's any people bidding, but, uh, so hopefully that'll continue when we meet, um, uh, on the West Side Pre-Bid Meeting, which will be February fourth. The Cutler bids are out now, and those bids are due on February fourth. We'll also have the pre-bid meeting for West Side on February fourth, and then the bids will be due on February eighteenth for the West Side Project, so, uh, you can see it's about, uh, a two-week split right now. Um, they're hoping that it'll be, uh, close the gap a little bit and end up about a week apart when they, uh, when they actually start construction here this spring.
Will there be one, um, manager for both of those sites?
Uh, ONG will have separate, uh, persons on each site.
But it would be one management?
Yeah, it's one firm, but it'll be, uh, three different people on those projects, yes.
Any questions for the twenty-twenty?
I do, I have two questions. When you drive up and you go past the building, um, and you, you see the four floors, and then what is the structure behind that, that's slanted, that looks like it'd be perfect for solar panels?
It might be. I, I, I think you're referring-
It's like separate, almost, and it's like-
You're referring to the gym roof, I believe.
Is that the gym?
Yeah, if, if you're looking at the, from the road-
Yes.
It's to the left-hand side of the building.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the gym roof there. Um, also in the cafeteria, um, there are sawtooth roofs, which are slanted roofs above it, they, uh, they, they come up and it's, uh, slant down, and those also point in a direction that might be, uh, benefit to get some daylight and also possibly get some more solar panels. But Rick Norris is now working with, uh, solar, uh, people right now-
Great.
To, um, see if we can get something done. It's not in the project right now, but if there's money left over or if we can do something, um, and pay for it as we go or something like that, um, so he's looking into that, uh, not only for these projects, but for the high school, uh, as well, so-
That's great.
That's still ongoing.
Um, can, so just to get clarification, um, so tomorrow, um, is it just you and Susan that are going to talk about, um, the, the Northeast, um, Academy?
I'm going to give an update on Northeast Academy, which truly goes into the CIP.
Okay.
Uh, and Susan will talk about the Alliance business and then-
Right, so just to know that, that there's, there's like huge-
Oh, the data, we, we, we missed the town council, you know, that, the basic district data on, on the SBAQ and-
Okay.
SATs.
Um, and then also, you, you created a CIP for the dishwashers.
Yes.
Right, under, um, under the recommendation of the town manager, correct? Um, to help meet the sustainability, uh, not, that's not sustainability, to meet, um-
The anti-plastics ordinance.
Right, that's right, to go again, to work with the plastic ordinance, it's going to be. Right, so I just wanted to make sure that people, Gretchen?
So we, if I'm getting this right, comparing how the gray water created by dishwashing versus the disposal of all the plastics?
Well, the, the, the town has an ordinance that we're not allowed to use Styrofoam trays, cups, and bowls any longer, so, uh, it, it, Ernie Kochmeter estimated it costs about approximately thirty thousand dollars a year to switch to paper products and straws. So we started to think about the possibility of actually using, uh, fiberglass trays and, uh, metal utensils.
Like we do at school.
But, but, but of course, we'd have to have dishwashers.
Right.
So I mentioned it to John Burt, uh, just kind of last minute, it was due today, uh, so he said, yeah, you know, it's, it's not, I, I don't even know if they're going to consider it, but, but, but I think they will. Um, and so if we could, uh, we could have dishwasher, dishwashers are being planned for the three new schools, so if we could get dishwashers in the current, and, uh, schools, uh, high school and kind of three of the middle, uh, three of the, the elementary schools, then we would actually be able to sanitize and reuse the utensils and trays, and so that's what's going to happen.
We're looking into the cost differentials of gray water, like, like how the, there's, like, three questions in there, and I'm having trouble getting them out in one sentence.
We'll, we'll, we'll look at the-
Environmental impact.
Look at the, the environmental impact of, of the dishwasher, but, um, yeah, sure, we can-
Versus gray water versus making paper-
I don't, I don't necessarily think that your point is invalid, I think that, that there is this, um, I think that what we're trying to do is, is to kind of meet the need of the plastic ordinance, but I, I think, I, I do wonder what has been studied around the gray water backlash, and I, and I'm sorry, I just don't have that-
There's also the cost of heating the water and employing the dishwashers and repairing, so I just was kind of looking at a cost and-
Well, we can, we can look into that.
It's all a balancing act.
There's research someplace, I'm sure.
Any other questions on the facility part?
Well, is Sam done, or is, or could we ask a question?
No, I'm, that's what I'm saying, is there any questions?
Oh, but it's not twenty-twenty, so-
Well, mine wasn't either, so.
Oh, okay, so my question is that when we met with the teachers and the, um-
Administrators the other day in the liaison meeting, they, um, had concerns about the phone lines. Um, phone lines, they, they would like caller ID, these are just some wish lists, you know, just something to think about. Um, they cannot make any long-distance phone calls, and since everybody now has cellphones, that, um, you know, people live all over the United States and they can keep their own cellphone number, people aren't having home phones anymore, so for a teacher to want to call someone's cellphone with a long-distance number, they're not, they're not able to do that, to talk.
Are there still long-distance calls anymore?
Well, from their-
From a landline, yes.
From a landline at a school, you cannot call, oh, that'd be a long-distance call.
I thought that was-
Well, they, they can, they can make long-distance calls, uh, they just may not be able to do it from their classroom, they might have to go to-
That's right, and that is correct.
That's one of the issues, is that sometimes, like, if you go to the office, there's a long line, or other times you might be discussing something very confidential and you don't want to be in the middle of the office-
Oh, no, of course not.
With things going on, so that was, and then also when, um, to dial nine-one-one with the phones, you have to dial nine, nine, and then nine-one-one. So they were questioning why we have, why there is that delay.
Right.
So, that, that was just some of the concerns that teachers and administrators brought forward to us.
Yeah, a couple of the schools have older systems where they have to dial nine before they dial nine-one-one, but I don't believe it's three nines, but-
Two nines.
That's correct.
Two nines, so maybe we can have a referral on it?
So I think that, uh, one of, one of the ideas was to actually put a label on those phones that had to do, where you had to do that, so that somebody would know that that's what they have to do.
Yeah, but they said just doing that is slow, takes time, you know, and if you're, if it's an emergency-
It is slow, because you have to wait until you get an outside, when you dial the first nine, you have to wait until you hear the click-
Right.
Which indicates that you've now got an outside line, and then you can dial the nine-one-one, but-
Right.
We actually have this on the agenda for the principals tomorrow.
And we, and we are looking into new phone system for the, for the entire district, so that's, that's something we're taking a look into.
Okay, good.
And then, um, the lockdown protocol, which I think is Sam's-
That's on the agenda, too.
For tomorrow with the principals?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And Sam's committee.
Okay, right, that's what I thought, in his committee, and it'd be nice if the board had an update also.
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions for Sam? During that, let's move on to community, committee reports, lead policy.
Yes, and I am sorry, we did not have a policy meeting and it was my fault because I had a chance to see my granddaughter.
And you took it.
So it's my fault, but we will meet again.
We all had a chance to see her.
You all got to meet her, I know.
And we're also having the second reading of policy of the emergency. All right, Andrea for curriculum?
We met on Monday and we, we had Mr. Lefebvre and Mrs. Donovan come to us along with Mrs. Hodge.
Okay.
And they presented us with their, with something that Susan is going to talk about tonight. And Miss Hodge is going to come back because we had questions for her that she had to research.
Okay. All right, finance and facilities?
We have not met.
All right, Rita Lern?
Oh, Lern, this is, this is a lot going on at Lern. Let's see, where do I start? First, Du Language Middle School will no longer be based in Waterford. It's, I could actually share a little bit of the letter that was sent out by Lern to all, to all the parents. So I have a feeling a lot of our students that attend Du Language will be coming back to the district, middle school students. So the seats are being transferred to Goodwin University, which was Goodwin College and is now- So it's going to be in East Hartford. So they are going to talk to parents. There will be slots for seventh and eighth grade students to be transported. They'll have like maybe two, one meeting place in New London and one in Norwich. But it is a long ride. So they tried for eight years, Lern, to find another site because the building that, an old school in Waterford, it needed a new boiler, it needed a roof, and the state said, we don't have any money for that, look for a site. And they've never been able to find one. So the state agreed to give their seats to Goodwin University because they have a building that'd be perfect for and the students could take advantage of a lot of the programs there. So that, that's sad, that we'll be losing that school in our area. Also, Dr. Spira is, has resigned as principal of the Marine Science Magnet School and he is now head of school at Isaac. Let's see, some of the other things we talked about, oh yes, Lern was not awarded their birth to three program. They will not receive a grant, so that program will be going away for Lern. They have met with the state and there's going to be another phase of the Ocean Avenue Learning Center because it, there is such a long waiting list, so the second level is going to be done. And the state will reimburse eighty percent and will have that in. I'm on that building committee, will have that in next June.
For K through 12 or?
It's pre-K. The Ocean Avenue Learning Center is pre-K through, through 21.
Okay.
So it'll be mostly the older students will be going upstairs.
Okay.
So they have more of their own space and they'll have culinary arts and, you know, the, things like that there. What else is there? Let's see, oh, well, we received the, you know, the fiscal report and she also did, Kate Erickson also did a new board member orientation. And it's wonderful to see how many districts are sending a board member. Sometimes the meetings are small and this time now are the rooms are overflowing. So all the districts are very invested and everybody is trying to do as much as they can to regionalize programs in our area. So it's very positive. So that's it.
So, so the Board of Ed, Town Council, the R T M, and the city, the city council, we have not met, though we are going to be meeting February-
There is a fifth, February 5th, and then that is followed by the, if, if in fact we're going to hold this meeting, it's followed by the joint board, town council, and R T M.
Right, and I think that that's going to be in lieu of that. It's, we're going to do the meeting.
But it'd just be a big joint meeting instead of just a little list.
Right, right, because I'm actually still waiting to hear from one person about who is going to be serving. So I am working on that. And then I think the next step after that is to bring it to, hopefully Joyce, to see if she would be willing to kind of doodle pool and find out a time that, that works out for most people.
Okay.
And to piggyback on sort of Rita's comments from the Board of Ed, the A G S A, and the G E A Liaison Committee, there was a request from the leadership from the G E A about the board reconsidering the school calendar for next year. Though we were very responsive to the people who came to speak to our board meeting, it did create a backlash that I don't think that we had anticipated. And so they did ask for us to kind of go back and actually have a conversation about that. And so I told them that I would bring it back to the board and that maybe, maybe our next time that we come together, I know it's a more of a budget workshop, but maybe we can have that as an agenda topic because if we're going to do it, I think we have to do it sooner than later. So once again, just to, just, I'm putting that bug in your ear that that's going to kind of come back. Trail Liaison?
Oh, wait a minute. There were, there were a few other things discussed at that meeting. One was the teachers and administrators felt that we have an awful lot of teachers being pulled out of classrooms and there are a lot of subs and not as much direct contact with students. So I will make a referral that we somehow keep an eye on this so that our students really have their own classroom teacher and the teachers aren't getting pulled out so much. I know there's been a lot of, a lot of different initiatives, but I think maybe slowed down a little bit. And I think the special ed staffing numbers are increasing of our special ed students. And it's difficult sometimes when they're pushed in to classrooms, especially, I think, elementary, well, probably all levels. And, you know, they, some of them don't come with an aide and some of them do, and it's, it's hard. So for, for the teachers, especially when you have these little, little, little children coming in.
I invited Denise to come back. We'll review the special ed staffing. I think we have a meeting like on the 10th of February, so we'd like to wrap up. I'll ask, I'll invite her to that.
Oh, great.
And also just to go back, that, at that meeting, we were given some assurances by Susan and Mike that they were going to take a look at the pullout because you weren't the main aware.
It's already been done.
Oh, it's already been done.
Yeah, so I just don't, I just don't want people to feel that that, that people weren't being responsible for that. So thank you very much. All right, Trail, Gretchen?
They're still marching along.
Figuratively and literally. And Grant Scholarship?
Well, I agreed to, to be a member, but I have absolutely no idea who's in charge of it or when it meets. So I would love to know.
I think-
All right, so I will, I will ask someone to get back to you about that.
Let me know.
Okay.
Maybe a contact would be Matt Brown of the high school.
Do we know? Erin McGuire, who is head of guidance, she'll help us with that.
I get to work here? That's exciting.
All right, so I'm going to move on to the action items. The next one is the consent agenda. And so all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion with points of clarification will be allowed. So I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So I'm making some moves.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Jane has seconded it. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain, that's the other word, sorry. All right, motion has passed. The Board of Ed would like to thank you, say thank you to your cause for Well Fargo Foundation Educational Matching Gifts Program, specifically Michelle Ezell Atkins, who has made a donation of $120 to Claude Chester. Another thank you to Michelle Ezell Atkins for matching donation of 120 to Claude Chester as well. A special thank you to Mr. and Mrs. Edward Johnson, who made a donation of $10 to the Claude Chester School Breakfast Program. The No Ink Baptist Church, who has made a donation of 150 to the Claude Chester Breakfast Program. To Christine Johnson, who has made a donation of $25 to the Claude Chester School Breakfast Program. And to the Exxon Mobile Education Alliance Program, who has made a donation of $500 to the Charles Barnum School. So once again, thank you, the board, thanks all of those people for help supporting our school system in various different and special ways.
I just want to add that this isn't their breakfast program, there are daily breakfast programs by food services. This is when children go on a vacation, they're able to bring home bags of food staples over the holidays so that they won't be food insecure. And the whole school puts together these bags and different community members contribute to the, you know, financing of this. And then families are able to take the food home when they're out of school for any length of time, for holidays and things.
That is amazing. Yeah, thank you for, thank you for once again reminding us about that. Lee, would you be willing to read the motion for all business, number one, please?
Well, indeed. The motion is to approve as a second reading of Policy P 5141 dot 213, Emergency Administration of Naloxone.
Thank you for pronouncing that one.
Did I do this, Don?
I think, yeah. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Rita has seconded it? I can't, she, she put a second to it. I don't know how else to say it. So is there any more information, Susan, from, from our first discussion that we had about that?
No, I think that the, the intent is to really make sure that we have this available that our nurses can distribute at the high school level. But we didn't indicate just high school because you don't know in these times that, you know, if it wouldn't be something that would be necessary at other levels. But that's the intent. And the police officer also has it. And then there's going to be a Good Samaritan policy that's going to come out that would also open up for others to be able to do that, if in case of emergency.
I know that we have, under new business, we have manufacturing program and update on teacher surveys. But on number three and four and five, I do know that we have people who have, are coming into kind of having a conversation. So I'm just wondering, folks, if we-
Actually, Erin is here.
Oh, she, well, okay, so I'm wondering if what we could do-
And Erin is sitting right there.
Well, they're not even sitting next to each other, like across the aisles, but I'm-
They said not during school.
So I'm actually just wondering then, could we do number two, which is the update on teacher survey results for the magnet themes? And then we'll go into the manufacturing and then go into the other ones. Okay.
Did we do a, did we?
No, we didn't, we didn't finish the naloxone.
Oh, my goodness. Well, she's doing that. Thank you, thank you, and thank you. I would like to, all those in favor to approve as a second reading the Policy P 5141 dash 213, Emergency Administration of Naloxone. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? The motion has carried. Thank you, friends, for keeping me honest.
You know what, we also have a first robotics thing. Martin is here for that.
Okay, so I, actually what I would like to do, because once again, I'm just trying to be kind to people who kind of come out and give us information. So I am going to ask that we go to number three so that we can do the robotics, so that you're not waiting. Though I'm sure you're loving every second about being here. So I am just going to put the motion on the floor so that we can get to the discussion. So Rita, would you be willing to read the number three motion under new business?
I think that's- That is.
Yes.
The motion is to approve the field trip requests to a first robotics competition in Ottawa, Canada, scheduled for March 13th, 2020 through March 16th, 2020.
Can I have a second on that?
A second.
And Andrea has seconded it. All right, so Dr. Maria-
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to introduce my, my friend, Martin Claudis, who has really taken over as one of the key advisors to our Aluminum Falcons. And they are about to begin their competitive season. And Martin and I and others are hard at work trying to find an alternate site. I think I mentioned a meeting in my, in my board notes. But Martin, Martin is here to, to talk about a field trip that was, that was submitted actually by Brian Chidley, who was a faculty member associated with, with the robotics team. But this is, and I, I just saw this today and I, I thought I'd just highlight it. So the Ontario District Carlton University event, we have been invited to that and I'll let Martin speak to it a bit. But it's a, it's a, it's an opportunity for our robotics team. And I, I take it, it's a pretty big honor to be invited.
Yes, it is. Thank you for letting me come in and speak tonight. Yes, my name is Martin Claudis. I am a parent. Just give you a brief overview. I'm a parent whose son graduated last year, was active on the team. I've been active with the team for four years, this is my fifth year with it. And I'm also president of the boosters and one of the mentors. In short, each year we look to compete outside the district to, A, get a better, more practice in and let the students get, or give the students an opportunity to see schools outside of our local, outside of New England. This, the past few years, we've been traveling down to Philadelphia and competing there. Those two years, we actually won that, those events. Previous to that, we went to New Jersey and competed there and we won that event as well. We are currently the number one ranked team in New England. That's out of 260-something teams, I believe. And this year, as we were looking for a place to compete, again, out of district, we were looking to go to Philadelphia again, but that district is full of a lot of new teams now and so it got booked up. So we were looking around for an alternate place to go and we just put some feelers out for, for different places that we might be able to go or might want to go compete. And the Ontario District heard, found, found out that we were looking for a place to go and asked us to, invited us to come. They're, they're looking for New England teams or teams outside their district to come up and compete with their schools. So it really offers an opportunity to see schools and ideas outside of our own district, New England. We do go compete worldwide, or to the world championship every year where we see international teams there. A thing to remember that FIRST is international, it's worldwide. And this would be an excellent opportunity for our students to go up and see other teams compete with them. The process that we did this year to try to figure out who can go or who we'd want to take is we put a questionnaire out to the students, an application, and really looked to see what the students would, would like to gain from, from doing one of these things. And we got some pretty good positive response from them, from that. We, I think we had 19 applicants. We selected 11 students. And one of the things that we were looking at is students that already have documentation to be able to travel across the border. I think all but one of, on, on that list actually has a passport, one is still waiting for it to come in. And at this point, this event is part of what we, as the boosters, pick up and cover the cost to the students to travel up. All the mentors and parents that travel up with that, they pay for their own way. Welcome, any questions about what we, else we may have going on?
Rita?
I want to thank you-
Yes, ma'am.
-for doing this and for all you're doing for our students. But I think this is so well documented that it's so, it's, it's easy to read. We can see exactly what they're doing almost every minute. You have it really like by two-hour periods here. So, no, I, I think it's great and I wish the students a lot of luck.
Thank you.
When, do you start building your robots soon?
We're actually, the, the new season got announced January 4th. Today starts week four of our build, so we have-
Oh.
-three more weeks that we can build before we start competing. Then there's a week zero, which is like, if you think of it as spring training, where everybody has an opportunity to go compete and officials have an opportunity to learn the new game. And then starts the competition season. We're actually going to compete weeks two and four in district. We're already scheduled to go to Bridgewater, Mass. We've gone there three years in a row, we're three-time champions there, so we're hoping to repeat there. Other event that we do, or that we're planning on doing is on week four. Previous two years, we've been going to Rhode Island, Smith University, I think it is. Unfortunately, the district, New England is consolidating some of its events and that, that event is no longer being held. So we're going to go to Worcester to W P I.
Oh, that's great.
That was an event that, prior to me getting involved with the team- That was a, an event that prior to me getting involved with the team, they, they've gone and competed. Uh, so those are our two in district events. And that's kind of sandwiched around this, this event, which would be on week three.
Right. And Dr. Greenear had, um, written, um, a letter that sort of mentioned that in conjunction with the New London four H, there, you're helping or assisting with them to build, to help out with their robot, which I think is just great.
It is a, it's probably my favorite part about FIRST is, uh, what, a term they call co-operation. Uh, when we go to events, we actually help other teams, less fortunate teams or less, less, um, oh, it's-
Or inexperienced.
Less experienced teams. Um, I will mention the last three years that we've gone to the Rhode Island event, we've helped a, uh, intercity Boston team, um, who showed up the last two years, just not ready to compete. Um, so we've helped them. And when it comes to, uh, it's kind of a tit for tat, when it comes to, uh, selecting alliance partners for the eliminations, uh, we've had the opportunity to select them and we, we brought them a cha, helped them get a championship or a banner last year. Uh, previous events, we've done that as well at, we actually did it in New Jersey. We did it, uh, twice up, up in Bridgewater, Mass. So it is something that we do as collectively at competitions. Uh, this year, if I'm understanding correctly, New London's team used to be associated with the school. And that association has ended and they're, they're now a four H team. Being that, that they're not directly associated with the school, they don't have the access to the school as they used to. And a couple of their mentors reached out to a couple of our mentors and said, hey, you know, we're falling behind here. So we looked at it and asked them what we can do and, and working with Dr. Greenear is, gave them a little room over at PV. They come over a couple of days a week and are able to-
Wonderful.
To, to work there. Uh, last two years that we've been over at Pleasant Valley School, we've invited them over to do scrimmages and to practice on, on a field because that's, that's one of the advantages we have in the facility we, we're at, is we're able to build a actual competition sized field so that we can have a better aspect of, of what we have to do when we go to camps.
Well, I've always been very grateful to, to Mr. Chidley for bringing robotics to Fitch High School.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Is there any other questions about the, um, about the trip, the field trip?
Nope.
Hearing none?
Thanks, Martin.
Those in favor of the field trip request for the first robotics competition in Ottawa, Canada, scheduled for March thirteenth, twenty twenty to March sixteenth, twenty twenty, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion is carried. Have fun in Ottawa.
Thank you. What a great thing.
All right. And so, um, Sue?
Would you rather we go at the end so that-
Sure. That would be great. Thank you.
Because that's what I was intending, but I can put it back there.
Now, that, that, you're, you're making a whole bunch of sense. So do, um, let's, so let's talk about, what, what, so where are you going?
So I think if we go to the-
Manufacturing?
And the pathways. And then we can do the IB courses that are-
Let me, let me give a little bit of an introduction because Susan and Erin and some other folks at the high school really helped me because we have a lot of things going on and Erin is going to orient you. But, uh, the, the clearest thing that I could say is that for our students, particularly who are, uh, very interested in going from high school to a career, not necessarily to college, uh, we have a big umbrella. And Erin is going to explain that big umbrella and that's called-
And the umbrella's coming around.
Yeah. That, that's called, that's called our pathways. But over the last couple of weeks, sort of somewhat by coincidence, uh, we have learned, and Erin's going to tell you about some grants that are going to be able to support the, uh, these initiatives. And they're, my point is, they're all under the auspices of the pathways, which, which has been going on for a while. But this is not a new initiative, but a greatly enhanced and please God greatly funded because we, we, there's some significant multimillion dollar grants that could, we, we believe will be very competitive for.
So six years ago at the high school, we brought on the career clusters and we selected fifteen of the sixteen career pathways. And so students during their ninth grade year, they are taking interest inventories and they're selecting a potential, um, career pathway that they're interested in and exploring careers under that and then taking classes under those pathways. So for example, if a student completes six classes under a specific pathway, um, they're honored at a senior ceremony with a certificate and a pin to wear at graduation. And it was really just about, um, getting students to think about life after high school and how it all connects. So this started six years ago and we really felt like it was important to kind of grow and expand and, and make it, um, stronger. So recently, myself and a few of my colleagues, um, joined a workshop over at Middlesex College and it was put on by the NC three T, which stands for the National Center for College and Career Transitions. And they've partnered, they're, um, out of Maryland, but they've partnered with different states, their, um, Department of Education, to really ask schools to look at how they're marketing different pathways for students. And when I say pathways, I don't mean just career or technical. We're talking about a student pathway that could include college. It could include technical program. It could include all of these things, but it's really getting the students to focus on the end goal, which is where are you going to work after all X, Y, Z happens. Um, and so we have been selected to join cohort number one in the state of Connecticut with a couple of other schools throughout the state to start to look at how we're really marketing what our schools are offering to our students and then to enhance them. So part of this conference was really about, there's a high number of students that are changing majors in college and potentially transferring, um, schools. And what that's doing is costing students and their families money. Um, it's time. And they were saying that if there were more experiences at the high school level and at the college level, with really them getting exposed to internships and career opportunities, that they may have more of a focus when they get to life after high school about really what they want to do and so that uncertainty doesn't create cost and debt. So there, and again, our very first meeting with them official as part of the cohort will be this Wednesday. And it's basically to look at how we're marketing everything to our students and enhancing opportunities for students, both courses inside and out of school.
Do we offer courses outside of the school?
So currently, um-
Sorry?
Nope, that's a good question. Um, so we have partnerships that are through some of the classes that we offer. So, um, for example, our culinary classes are teaming with local businesses. Our nursing program is teaming with local organizations. So there are partnerships, um, but we're looking to enhance that further. This year, um, our college and career counselor, with the help of our community coordinator at the high school level, started to put together lists of internships, job possibilities, so that everything was sort of in one central location for students to access. So we've started to work on this, but this is going to kind of catapult us into, um, more opportunities and so forth for our students. So a part of the NC three, um, T was to really look at, this was a sample from a school, I believe in Minnesota, um, how they're, they're framing, um, basically the four years that students spend in high school and really showing you how everything works together. So it's English every year, it's math, it's science, it's social studies. And then the CTE course would be their area of, um, focus that they're working on, whether it's engineering, whether it's hospitality. And so kind of also working on our marketing and how we're really bringing everything together because Fitch has so much to offer. But we hear time and time again that we really have to figure out how we're getting things sort of in, in one centralized locations, how we're informing parents and students in the community. And so this gives us an opportunity to really critically look at how we're doing things and, and to improve it. And it, so this is sort of the section one and then right below it, it's important for our students to be aware of in the pathway that they selected, what jobs would look like, what training they're going to be expected to do, whether that's an associate's degree, whether that's a college degree, whether that's a technical school. And kind of bringing everything together, they're really interested in something in high school and what that's going to look like after high school. Um, so Dr. Greenear had kind of put together and kind of referenced this umbrella. Um, and so we're really looking at expanding our student pathways. Um, one of the things that I'd like to talk to you guys next about is the manufacturing pipeline initiative. And then you'll notice some of the other, um, areas on this umbrella we have and then some things we'd like to enhance further. So this year, we officially joined the youth manufacturing pipeline initiative. Um, and what that is, is a program funded by the U.S. Department of Labor Workforce in partnership with the Department of Labor and the Eastern CT Workforce Investment Board. Basically, what that is, is that there are a lot of businesses locally that are looking for students coming out with experience specifically in manufacturing. And so the high school's fortunate that we offer an intro to woodwork, a manufacturing one and two course. And so this organization has put together a curriculum that they want to see the students complete during those courses so that they are ready the moment that they graduate for employment. Places like Electric Boat are saying, we want these students, but they have to be ready with the skills that they need after high school. And so the focus has been, uh, Mr. Dano is our manufacturing teacher and he's taken the existing curriculum and compared it to what this organization is looking for. Um, and they very much align with the exception of a little bit of blueprint, um, in there that needs to be kind of inserted into the courses. So once the students go through these three courses, they have the ability to take an assessment. So this group comes into the high school, um, during this junior year for the students and they take an assessment. When the students pass the assessment, they go directly into the pipeline directly to employers. And so there are seventy different groups, um, of employers currently involved with this. And they are looking so forward to having students ready right out of high school to join these pipelines. And so we really had all of the pieces, um, to the puzzle. We are looking as well, Three Rivers, we're partnered with to have students earn college credit when they take specific courses. And this last manufacturing class will also be one we would like to get paired up with Three Rivers so that the students can also, um, earn a college credit. So it was a really, it was a no brainer. We were ready to go. We were fortunate that we have a shop. We're fortunate that we have a teacher and, and really almost ninety percent of the curriculum. So it was just an opportunity for our students to be passionate about something in high school and then have it equal a career after high school. Um, we've, we've offered project lead the way now for quite a few years and, and every year we look to get more students involved in the pipeline specifically of engineering. Uh, and students can take four classes at Fitch High School, um, along the project lead the way, uh, program. And so again, it's getting our students exposed to classes at the high school level and then going on further to, um, pursue potential degrees in engineering. So this was just an example of something that is existing at the high school that we're looking to still continue and, and grow. Again, another thing that's currently at our high school is the nursing program where sixteen students every year, um, they take a class that meets every day and they go through the course. They have real life experience going out to different organizations in the community and they take an assessment at the end to get their CNA license. So again, a class, they get experience, hands-on experience, potentially to a career after high school. As we just discussed, we have a wonderful robotics team as well. And so it's talking about also how we incorporate clubs into this whole idea of pathways. So not only courses, not only, um, trade schools, college after, but also being able to take that a step further with some of our clubs and activities. It's all about finding student interest and being able to really focus on that and find out if that's something that you love enough to do as a career down the line. We connected with, um, our friends over at New London. They currently have a JROTC program there. Um, we just got some information about potentially what that could look like for us at the high school. And although there is a waiting list and so forth, we are looking to explore the possibility of, um, a JROTC or just sort of defense and different leadership classes. Um, if you look specifically at what the JROTC program does, it comes into a high school. Um, for example, in New London, um, they are two people, representatives from the Navy. Uh, at, at the time when I was at New London, they were both retired. And they come in and they teach courses, different ROTC courses and their leadership, citizenship, naval orientation. Um, and again, it's just a wonderful opportunity. So we are looking to explore what that would look like at Fitch High School and what the possibilities are there. Um, and just next steps, we are going to continue with this, um, manufacturing pipeline initiative that we've joined now this year, continue our partnership with the NC three T to really look at, um, our pathways and what we're offering to our students. Um, we are going to look at FAS and our personal project, our global citizenship course, because that gives us opportunities to work with students to really learn more about their interests and interests in general and potential career interests. Looking to expand how we're offering our career clusters, um, looking into potentially ROTC opportunities. Um, we have our IBCP program coming down the line, um, looking to expand our culinary offerings, um, and just how we get more student internships, job shadow, community service, just job opportunities in general with the high school.
And it was interesting because Erin and I had been talking about this and Mike had been, had pulled together a meeting. So we all met together at the high school several times. And at the same time, we were, um, introduced really over the holidays again to a Department of Defense grant that both Val and Lori Lapine had been clued in on, a three million dollar over three years for just this. So these are all the ideas, when we read through the grant carefully, all the things that Erin has proposed would fit beautifully into this grant. So Shannon's already on it. I've already sent my letter to them. Um, and also there's a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar Department of Defense Education Activity Grant that also is going to be STEM and careers ready. And, um, and also health, which has the health component in it as well that maybe could be used for our nurse, nursing course. So we're really excited because as we're thinking about growing, some of the things that are already existing, these grants came to fruition. So it could really spearhead this project and really help us to, to really get it out to kids sooner than we thought and sooner than anticipated.
When's the grant due?
So the first grant-
Twenty-fourth of February.
Yep.
But who's counting?
But who's counting? And then the other Department of Defense in education activity isn't until the spring.
So the grant, the, the Department of Defense Education Program, the three million dollar program, uh, when I heard about it, I realized we were actually doing all of these things and we could simply use a million dollars a year to feed the manufacturing. And one of the things we really want to do is hire an intern coordinator, a full-time person that would actually get kids-
Yep.
And provide transportation for kids to get to these sites, which would be phenomenal. Project Lead the Way, we already have. It's already part of our proposed International Baccalaureate Careers Program, but we could add some equipment, uh, which is, is not inexpensive. Uh, we have the health program. Uh, again, uh, that's part of the, the larger umbrella, potentially that's a DODIA. Cybersecurity was back to the Department of Defense, uh, defense industry workers. We, we have AP and IB courses in programming and we thought cybersecurity would be something, uh, that would be terrific. Uh, it turns out the Department of Defense funded the original U.S. first robotics competition. The Dean Kamen fellow who has a house on South Dumpling Island, right off the coast here. He's the one who started the whole thing. But DOD funded it. So we were gonna, we were gonna provide some funding, again, just to make us more competitive. So, uh, and then the, the, uh, ROTC or, or probably they have something called National Defense High School, which we, which we can get in. They're not waiting on us for that. So what we're, we're trying to do and, you know, we, we have, uh, we have an ace up our sleeve named Shannon Weidel. And so we, 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 we think all these thoughts in, in an excited brain, you know, sort of brainstorm way. And she actually writes it all up. And so I think we're going to have a very competitive grant application here, uh, which will fund, uh, to a larger extent, uh, three million dollars over, over three years and really help us get some of the expensive equipment, help us get going on, on some of these internships. So I'm, I'm very excited. And then of course, the Department of Defense Education Activity, that will, uh, help us fund some additional STEM and perhaps, uh, more at the high school or at the elementary or whatever. But Erin has been championing this for, uh, for years and when she explained it to me, I, I, I really, thanks to clarity of her thinking, uh, I actually saw the big picture. So I hope, I hope this, I hope this little graphic here has helped. I hope this little graphic here has helped. That's, that's really what we're trying to do. And, you know, school, college and career ready, a lot of careers require college, so it's, it's not mutually exclusive, but with the manufacturing pipeline, we're, we're talking about very well-paying jobs that high school seniors who graduate step into, and so, we want to support those, those students as well.
Questions from the board?
I just have a quick one. Do, do we have any collaborations with Grassall Technical School with any of these?
So, there was an article in The Day, Grassall, it was a preview sort of, they're also in the manufacturing pipeline. Right now, the schools are sort of isolated, but Grassall does offer sort of a, this event that brings all of the Manufacturing Pipeline Initiative groups together. We haven't had any conversations about sort of facilities and all that, it becomes a little tricky, but we are very fortunate that we do have our own woodshop, and we do have a lot of great equipment there. But, we're very new to this, but the team meets every other month, and it's with all the schools that are part of the pipeline, so there's certainly, potentially, possibilities in the works to collaborate.
That would be wonderful.
We've had a few teachers even go out on visits to see some of the others who are, who've already incorporated this. So, even that kind of collaboration, right when they're right next door, can be done.
Yeah.
Do we still have the club at the high school for students who would like to pursue teaching careers, that they would go into-
The elementary schools.
Right, right now, it's not a club happening after school, it's sort of embedded in some of our classes. We have our Children's Lit that travels down to the elementary, our athletes do, so it's happening in pockets, but, but not the way that you're talking about.
Because I'm, I'm wondering if that would make sense to somehow capture that, if it's happening even just a little bit, where we have high school students going into, like after school, going into-
Even in our unified classes, we have our upperclassmen that may be aspiring teachers that are helping out in these classes, so-
What, once again, I mean, I, I think to your point, Erin, is that there's so many things that you guys do at Fitch that, that go really, really well, and that you guys really try very hard, and unfortunately, a lot of that time, that stuff doesn't get acknowledged. So, I, I would put it in there, because I think it's really, it's important, because I think there's this misconception that we don't offer anything for, we can always do better, I get it, but that we don't offer students ways of getting jobs after high school that don't necessarily require a four-year degree. So, once again, I really appreciate the efforts that you put into, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Erin about the career pathways? And I can't wait to hear more and more about the grant. Thanks, thanks for keeping us posted.
All came together at the same time.
I like it when the universe does that.
Sometimes does that for us.
All right. So, let us move on to the, the number four and five, and then, Susan, we're going to go back to you at, at the end, if that's okay.
Yep.
So, Jay, would you be willing to read the motion for number four, please?
Sure. A move that we approve the IB Global Politics Course.
Can I have a second on that? Jane has seconded that. Can we have discussion?
So, I just want to orient you, this is, really, these are two courses that have gone through that eighteen-month timeline, similar to what Amy McKenna's ELA courses. So, we re-looked at some of the courses that had been proposed, and to see where they are, I've actually created a chart that I certainly will share with the board, that has, has to go through Curriculum Instruction Council, I mean, curriculum, Board of Ed Curriculum Meeting first. But, these are two IB courses that we'd like to get into the handbook, and so, the COW had, you know, looked at these and said, "Go off and write," and so, they have done that, they've come to the, back to the Board of Ed Curriculum Committee, and they're ready to go. So, we're excited about that. So, both IB Global Politics Course and an IB Music Course.
We'll just handle one. Andrew, do you have any comments about the, because curriculum met on this, correct?
Yes, only to, to urge the board to, to approve them, they're ready to go, they're, they were soundly and fully explained at the, at the Cowell meeting, COW meeting, I'm sorry, the, yeah, they were at the Cowell meeting, and also at the Curriculum Subcommittee, so, we're ready to go.
Could, could we have just a short, like, paragraph about what, what they entail, since-
So, that's why I invited both Kellys. So, they can come up and speak to that.
Thank you.
They brought their curriculum maps to the Curriculum Committee, but they can certainly, that's why they were invited, to just speak to it.
Well, I just thought that they wanted to kind of hang out with us. Where else would you want to be on a Monday?
Thank you.
So, the I, can you hear me with this?
Yeah.
Okay, so, the IB Global Politics Course is new to IB. It replaces what used to be their political science course, they changed the curriculum to make it a more global approach about two years ago. The course was put together by Sarah Norman and Carly Rising, two of the social studies teachers at the high school who are interested in this area. And our goal is to get more students involved in terms of, we have a lot of students who are interested in political things, political science, and economics, things like that, and so, there was some interest and some question from the students if we could have a course like this. By offering, we don't have very many one-year IB classes, so by offering a one-year IB class, we're hoping also to broaden our offerings, to give students more access to other higher-level classes. Right now, history is our required higher-level class, and it's a two-year course, which ties up students for two years. Having a one-year course like Global Politics will give students an opportunity to take AP Government, along with the Global Politics class, which gives them, I think, a stronger understanding for how government works, both locally and globally. We also have quite a few STEM-oriented students who would like to take more higher-level sciences, but they want to take computer programming, things like that. So, so this is a good fit for a lot of our students, and especially with the way the world is today. I think it's good for students to have an understanding of what's happening on a global scale in terms of politics, and certainly, just keeping, keeping in touch with things and the news.
Thank you. Any other questions about the IB?
Can, can other, could any students take that course, right? They don't have to be an IB student.
That is correct. It's open to anybody who'd want to take that course. And because it's standard level, it's pretty accessible.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor to approve the IB Global Politics Course, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? The motion has carried. So, Rita, would you be willing to read number, the motion for number five, please?
Sure. To approve the IB Music Course.
Can I have a second?
Second.
I, I saw Gretchen, so I'm going to go with Gretchen. And, so, if you would be willing to kind of give a oral paragraph?
Well, to kind of summarize how the whole course works, it's technically a one-year course, but they would need to complete a full year of AP Music Theory, just to get into the class, and it can be taken as a standard level or higher level at the same time. It's basically taking everything in AP Theory and putting it all into context, so there's a lot of composition involved, there's a performing component, so they, right now, this was a discussion, but they, it tends to, I re-looked at it, they do have to have a background playing an instrument or voice to be in it, because of the performance component. There's also a lot of analytical writing, and it branches beyond Western music. So, AP Theory is pretty much Western music, common practice period, it's taking that and starting to explore other cultures, starting to understand relationships between, you know, you name it, looking at jazz and Indian ragas, and starting to build those types of things together, where they can also perform other different types of styles as well, and they can start to kind of explore those different areas. So, a lot of composition, a lot of performing, a lot of analysis involved with the class.
Yeah. It sounds like a course Addie would have loved to have taken, right?
I know. Any other, any other discussion or questions?
Sounds wonderful.
It does sound wonderful. Yay.
I was, I'm on that committee, and that is one of the classes I've been the most excited about in the entire foreign change years I've been on board.
Yay, sounds wonderful.
I think both these courses are really beautiful examples of, of the integration of AP and IB. Our teachers, you know, many of our teachers teach both, like Andrew teaches the AP, so he's really excited about this extension. So, I think, and it shows you all the different opportunities that our kids would have to explore both at the same time. So, they can get a diploma program, but they can also, they can be in the diploma program, and they can take some of the AP classes, or AP kids can take, you know, who have mostly AP in their background, can also take international baccalaureate. So, it's really a good example of kind of the marriage of the two.
Thank you, Susan. So, I'm going to go forward with the motion, all those, all those in favor to approve the IB Music Course, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion has, motion has carried. Yay.
Thank you.
All right, Sue, do not, last but least. So, how many survey results did we get from this? Thank you, guys, for coming.
Thank you very much. So, this survey that I'm getting ready to show you, let me just open it up. It's given just to the teachers first, and we will form a survey very similar for the parents to send out. And actually, Seth Kamen has stayed the whole time, because he has been instrumental in getting us moving, so that we can get this job done, because our two new elementary schools-
Will be, is he, our two new elementary schools will come online in 2021, so, we need to really make sure that we have the right themes for our intra-district magnets in the elementaries. So, you can see that we had 186 responses, so, elementary teachers, I think, K, pre-K through five, were all encouraged to take it, and I think they actually had time after a faculty meeting or at different times to take it. You can see, the red is the number of teachers, so 91.9 of those 186 responders were teachers. You'll see in the orange is the administrators, and then, there's some other different members, too. I think some teachers answered as parents as well, so there might have been two or three of those. And then, you know, looking at the blue for the primary, pre-K through two, red are teachers three through five, and orange is really teachers who might be specialists or teach across all the grades. And then, you can see in the different colors that all of our schools are really fairly And these are administrators who primarily work in the elementary schools, there were, I guess, a couple central office. So, we really looked at five or six different opportunities. So, this, this is the first slide that asks them to rate one through five, one being their least preferred, five being their most preferred, in the category of active exploration, play and ingenuity. And I think when I came to you, I shared with you what the survey actually showed, and how there were links, so people could go on and see the different examples of what that might look like, or see a slideshow. So, you can see that 103 respondents were thinking this was the, you know, most interesting to them. And, and there were nine respondents that said it was, you know, of least interest, and then in-between, so it looks kind of like a stair-step. And then, there was the, we wanted to include our, our NEA and our STEAM, Katherine Kolnowski, so for the arts, fine arts, dramatic arts, visual arts, you can see that there's still great interest in the arts. So, many people gave it a three, four, you know. And then, this was classical studies, so, one, one would be least interested, so 55%. It was almost like the mirror image of, of ingenuity and play. So, but 12 did give it a five, so 12 teachers did indicate that they were seriously interested in it. And then, there's environmental marine life science theme, and you can see that that also seems to be of great interest, that we got a lot of fours and fives responding to that particular theme. The Discovery Academy, which included some of Rensouli and Reese's thinking around, you know, whole school and school-wide enrichment, and other themes that would look to have creative problem-solving, and those kind of ideas was also very interesting to our teachers. And then, the Primary Years Program, kind of across the board, I think that, you know, some of the teachers have heard about the amount of planning and the work involved in NYPD, but I still think it's of interest to people. And then, the STEM Leadership Theme, again, more threes than anything else, is kind of in the middle there, or STEM, did I say STEAM? STEM Leadership. And then, this would be Katherine Kolnowski's STEAM, so even though we already have one, there's still some interest, definitely, in STEAM. And then, if you, this is hard to see, I apologize, the, I really was going to show you the real live active on-the-web version, just like I was going to show you the live Alliance version, but when I heard this morning that we didn't have, we might not have internet access, I had to whip these up for you. So, I'll make sure you get them.
Whip them up.
Whip them up. So, if you see, this is active exploration and play, and in this case, we had to rank preference of magnet schools on a scale of one to eight, one being your top choice, and eight being your last choice, so it kind of goes in opposite order. So, you can see that play and ingenuity was many teachers' top choice, and, you know, very few was it the last choice. And then, the arts is kind of across the board, classical studies kind of has that mirror image to the ingenuity and play, environmental studies, you know, kind of is, you see a lot of the middle taken up of interest. Same thing with Discovery Academy, with, oh, with the Primary Years, it's, it's kind of evened out across the board, although you see slightly to the right, which was less interesting. And then, you've got the STEAM, and then, finally, we have the, oh, no, I'm sorry, STEM Leadership, and then STEAM. So, so, I think that we wanted to send the same survey out to see what parents said, working with Michael Alves, on how do we collect the data, to find out, parents, as they respond, where, what town, what side of town, what neighborhood are they coming from, to kind of showcase, so we know that when we go to put our different magnets on different parts of town, that it would draw interest from other sides of town. So, I think that's the goal, so that we can make sure that we have that socioeconomic balance in our schools. So, there'll still be neighborhood schools, all five of our, of our elementaries, but they'll also have choice in a lottery system, where they can select the schools. So, the next step will be to send it out to parents and to bring back the other data.
Because if we don't get this, we'll be back to square one, where we were several years ago, not having the diversity necessary to meet the state-
So, this is all part of the 2020 vision, I don't know, Mike, if you want to speak to this? The big, the big vision?
Well, well, of course, the reason the school, which is being built on the Cutler site, got 80% reimbursement, was because that was racially, that is replacing Colchester School, which is racially unbalanced. So, the, the big question is, how do we ensure that people from the west side of town would be interested in a magnet at the Cutler site, and conversely, what sort of magnet on the west side of town would draw people from the mystic side? And then, I know- And then I know Seth is super interested because his school, Charles Barnham School, will itself become a magnet like, like the others. And so we're going to have to, as Susan said, when we do the parent survey, we will ask them to identify their address. And thanks to the work of this demographer, Michael Alves, that we're working with, we'll know if teacher, we'll be able to say, not by race, but by socioeconomic level, what sort of school on Cutler site would be of interest, because it will be a neighborhood school. And, and the nice thing about west side, I think there'll be a fair number of walkers, because there are a lot of children who actually go to Colchester, who live, they go to Colchester, who live right there on Brannegie. So, so we, we want to be sure that we're getting the, the kind of diversity that we, that we, we need, and that we promised the state we would have.
So when does the, when does the parent survey go out? Sorry, Rita.
Well, I wanted to bring this to you first, to show you what the teachers have come up with. So as soon as we get the nod, we'll go ahead and send it out to parents. So it's, we've got a version for parents that has them identifying their address and being able to respond.
Rita?
I would love to see instead of classical studies, but a language immersion program at one of our elementary schools. I think that would be, be a very big draw for, for parents. I think it'd be extremely beneficial, because it's, to wait until they're in middle school, you know, it's just kind of an introduction. But if it was in elementary, so I would love to see classical studies replaced with a language immersion.
Well, you know, when we, when we describe them, one of the advantages of the primary years program, it, it must include world language.
So it is really a version of that. I think maybe in looking at the descriptions, I'll definitely ensure that when we fill in primary years, that, that families know that that is one of the big, you know, opportunities is the language immersion.
But the classical studies just doesn't, I don't know.
Well, the original, the reason we put it down there, the original group that worked on the magnet themes for the elementary, these were the ones that they had really highlighted, and then we wanted to include the two existing to see, because one of the questions was, do you need two of those?
Right.
You know, and so it looks like it's pretty stable. It doesn't really look like anybody's calling out more for it, the way that the act, play and ingenuity looks, or the marine science.
Well, I mean, if you could throw in another one, my suggestion would be language.
Andrea?
I would agree with that 100%.
I would, excuse me, I would agree with it 100%, except as Rita is painfully aware at the RMMS, you can't staff it. The reason a multicultural magnet school started out as an immersion half English.
Well, I don't mean a total immersion school. I just meant at least they have a class every day of lunch.
And that's what PYP is.
That's PYP. You just described PYP.
But I'll make sure that it's stated there, so they see that.
We will make that clear.
Andrea?
Well, since the classical magnet, magnet theme was my idea, I, I'll take responsibility for not making it attractive enough. I think if, if I had done that, it would have been.
Oh, maybe.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll own that. But I think that your idea is, is just a fabulous one. We're losing the, the dual mag, or the dual language.
Yes.
And this would, would address that, that need. And, and I, I agree, I agree with you that it's very difficult to staff, but I'm sure that there are ingenious ways to accommodate for that.
And I mean, if, if it's just, you know, a class a day, it's really basically one teacher.
Right. But I, I can tell you that I, I used to work with Jamie Giordano when she was principal in Waterford, and I was there, and we had children from kindergarten to grade five, and they were basically proficient, walking out the door. If they had from kindergarten, just, just the class, just, you know, once a day. And it started out pretty modestly, like, you know, a half hour kindergarten. But she, she told me, because she was there after I, she told me those kids could speak Spanish by the end of fifth grade, and it was, it was terrific. So I think you're right. And, and to me.
And East Line does it, you know, in their elementary schools. So I think it's time Groton does, especially with our population is so diverse. It would be a big draw.
It, I think it'd be a huge draw.
And this, this is also part of, of looking for teachers as mentors. And we're talking about Hispanic teachers.
Yeah, right.
Who are, are also part of looking for more teachers who can then teach our young ones Spanish.
Yeah. I, I, very exciting.
Thank you so much for taking lead on that. So the nod comes from where? From us? Okay, so that was why I asked the question. And, but I guess for me is, how are we making this available to our parents? And how, how, like, how are we, wow, lost my words, but how are we, like, what's the push out? Thank you, Rita. How would we rolling it out?
So, like all good things, we always do the messenger, the school messenger, and we send it out to folks. We can also put it online for them to do, very similar to the cul, the climate survey that they do, and tell them how important. We were really impressed that 186 elementary teachers, so that's like almost all of them, were able to answer this. I don't know that we'll get 100%, but if we could get numbers like that from our parents, that would really be a good indicator.
Will, will there be access to this? Because I think that there's also some, some families who don't have internet.
Yes, we could have forms also for them.
So forms, okay.
Well, what I was, what I'm thinking is, with, with Mark's permission, Mark Russell's permission, we could get somebody, and I suspect Mr. Daner could be that person, to, to do some town hall presentations that we could tape. What is it, what does play and ingenuity really look like? And give, give somebody five, five minutes or so, and I or somebody would do the primary years program, and perhaps Susan could do the Renzulli thing, which is like super terrific. So, so I think in a half hour, we could tape and present maybe a couple, a couple of places around town, what these, and then do a robo-call to all parents and say, this information is available on our website, the taped presentations, and then we will roll it out, what's today, 27? I mean, we, we could certainly do this by, by the end of February. And we would know, because this is a, you know, this is, this is a topic that, that has consumed a huge amount of our attention. We, we met with Rick Callenberg, we met with Michael Alves. This is a very important decision for the, for the future of this community, because if we do it right, we will do away with redistricting of school neighborhoods. And everybody in this whole community wants that to happen, and I see my friend Joan nodding, because every, everybody wants this to be right.
Right. I think that that needs to be the selling point, because I think that there's many people who are, remember about what that's like, because they might, you know, they might not, they might not have had kids at that point in, in the school, or they have a spread between their kids, and so they remember what that was like. So I think that that's important. I, I feel confident that if we can do the town, some type of town hall meeting, and that you use as many of the opportunities that we have available to us to get that out, I, I, I say, let's get it, let's get it done. Thank you.
And is it somehow going to go out to not just parents, but the community? Let's say, can board members take the survey?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Other people go online to the Groton Public Schools website and take it?
There is a dropdown in the original one that I designed with Dennis, so that you see who you are. So like, the teachers took theirs, and the dropdown was for teacher. There's a dropdown for board members. There could be a dropdown for community member. But in the parent section, once they hit parent, there's another one that leads them to say, please indicate what your address is, so that we can use that for the Alves study.
Gretchen, I'm going to start on your side for information and communications. Do you have?
I do know that I helped a bunch of parents and a few friends take that quiz using my phone. So I do know it's doable for outside sources who have helped and done it. Maybe even board ad member, the one thin purple line. Really haven't heard that much communication, except for kids who've been coming home from college and saying how much they want to move back home. They don't like wherever they are.
Right, thank you. Jane?
That's scary. I was invited to join the Democratic Town Committee because of my long experience in education, and did so. So I was voted in this past month, and I enjoyed very much the public hearings that the board did. That was extremely helpful for everyone.
I think Gretchen has one more thing.
Oh, Gretchen.
I did enjoy my, like, six and a half month break off the RTA. See? But I'm back on again, baby.
All right, great.
Good luck.
Jane was her other?
No.
Okay. Andrea?
Just that, just that we have the Martin Luther King Accumatical Service, and our, our scholars were just magnificent.
You're here.
Jay?
Not surprisingly, I was asked by a parent when we removed dishwashers and metal cutlery from the schools and went to styrofoam and everything. And frankly, I don't know exactly when that happened. I assume it had to do with, with cost, because you don't have to have as many employees and as many costs. And in this area, we know that all that goes to the incinerator anyway, so it really wasn't going to the landfills. And then, interestingly enough, someone else brought up, well, if you go to paper, you know, isn't this just going to continue to stress the rainforests and all this deforestation going on? So it's an interesting debate, you know, especially in this area, where we're not putting the styrofoam into the ground to live forever, we're, we're incinerating it. I did have the, another parent who asked me, what does the NYPD program cost? And of course, it's not in the current budget broken out, because we're still under the grant. And, am I correct in that?
Well, yes. I think the, the simple answer is, I might give you the exact figures, but we've invested through the, the MSAP, the magnet school, magnet school assistance program, approximately $50,000, sending teachers out or bringing in NYPD people to, to teach our teachers. And I think it's about $10,000 fee. So for the three years getting into it, and we will apply on April 1st and have a verification visit probably early next fall, we, we will have invested about $60,000 a year, six through 10.
Okay, and then going forward, it's basically just the fees?
That's right.
I mean, it'll be equivalent, comparable to like IB.
We can continue to report on that. You know, and of course, as new teachers come, we will. For a teacher to go to the MUDL years, international baccalaureate training, in, in terms of travel, tuition, and housing, it's about $3,000. So we would probably have, you know, two, three, four teachers, six through 10, that will need to do that. So it's, I guess, I, I would round that off to probably $15,000 a year, moving forward.
We've had many more go because of the grant that's actually required, because it is a train-the-trainer model, so you can send, you know, on a regular basis, like, let's say, they have to do ELA training, so that's like once in four years. But it can be one person who goes out and comes back, and then there's the online training, which is much less expensive.
It's about $700. So, yeah, in, in the, in the international baccalaureate program is very dynamic, as, as Kelly was mentioning, you know, the, new courses emerge, new, new focus sometimes is provided. So in terms of the program, it's dynamic, and in terms of funding the program, you have to sort of keep up. But, you know, it, it, it is that state-of-the-art program that helps kids learn. And I, I was just reading something the other day that said, in, in a world of, of rapid change, the best thing we could do for our students is, is to teach them how to learn, because God knows, things are changing so quickly, they better figure that out. And so that's sort of the bedrock of IB.
Thank you. Any other communications or comments? Thank you. Lee?
I went to the St. James of Episcopal Church. It was, as always, just incredible. And I knew where to sit this year, so I could actually see the course, which is the matrícula. And it was wonderful. And I also went to the health office at Mary Lawrence, which was also.
Thank you. Thank you very much for going and representing.
Happy to do it.
Rita?
I have a, I also went to the Dr. Martin Luther King Accumatical Scholarship. Their, their service was beautiful, and our Fitch scholar, Melissa Mancuso, sang beautifully. She did two different pieces. And also, I have to, the, the woman, I think it's Leica Bertrand, who did the poetry reading, it, it was amazing. It was just really beautiful. So anyway, that was, that was just really lovely. I have a couple of other, I don't want to lose sight of some of the people that came to speak to us at our public hearing on the budget. I'd like a referral on the handicap upgrades that need to be made for, to our football field. The band representative had come up and asked about lights on the back of the building, because they're, they can't, the band doesn't get to practice very often on the football field, and they're practicing in the parking lot behind, but it's very dark. And hopefully, there won't be the issue of the mosquitoes next year, because I know that that was part of it, where everybody had to be gone by 5:30. But they would, they did ask for about lights, maybe to be put on the back of Fitch High School, and to upgrade our facilities. And I also would like, there is another gentleman, you know, there's a big concern about middle school sports, and not being able to have one middle school, have one team. I'd like to propose having two teams, and seeing what that would cost. We already have two coaches now at our two different middle schools, and they can do, they could scrimmage against each other, you know, boys and girls. I just think it's extremely important to develop children at that stage, to just limit it to like 12 students on a team or something, when we have so many. It was hard enough going from three middle schools to the two, but then to think about one. And anyway, I was just going to ask if we could have a referral about maybe having two teams, two Groton teams.
Right.
So, I think, oh, yes, and I, I was, maybe, we were asked about tutors in foreign language that students are required to take in high school, but sometimes they need some tutoring, and whether or not we could use some of our alliance money for tutors, for foreign language tutors. I think that was about it. There were a lot of things. I thought it was great to have people come forward at our public hearing and speak to us, and, you know, the things that we wouldn't, you know, necessarily know about, so, anyway. And the turf fields, of course, there's a big push to have a, a turf field at the high school, but it does cost about, what, $250 million?
No, no, no. The, the field itself costs about a billion, just the field.
A billion?
A million.
Oh, a million? Oh.
No, we'll get.
I thought you said, was it 250?
No, no. What, what I was saying was, Ledger put in a track.
Yes.
And the field.
Oh, okay.
And that came to 2.6 million.
Okay. Well, I mean, I'm, both would be, would be great, because we'd be able to use that field for soccer and lacrosse.
Right.
And so many other sports.
Right.
So, anyway, something to think about.
All right, so my correspondence is, as everyone has had in terms of some concerns about the robotics, so, but I feel that we are, and I, I think that you'll share at some point sort of more information, but just wanted to let you know that, that, as, as you know, we've been having those correspondence. I don't know why I'm not speaking.
Just a footnote, because it came up tonight. You, you heard Mr. Carter say, there is a 4H club. In, in a 4H club... 4-H club, and a 4-H club is not associated with a, a school, of course, and so any students from the region.
Can attend that.
Can, can, can participate in that. And I, I pass that information on to interested parties.
So you guys were included in the email, but I did, as I was asked, which was to, after the budget, to kind of do five fields, and so we do have that information, and I really appreciate both Rick and that Robert LaFrance was just really very responsive, actually, that day. So that was in there. I'm also been asked by Liz Porter, who is a board member, who is under the weather at the present moment, just, just to let people know, that there are 14 students from the Cutler Middle School that are going to be participating in the State History Day, that she has been going in at least once a week and helping prep the students. So I am just, I think that's great, and thank you, Liz. But also, just to pay attention to the fact that we got our volunteer hours, and that just for the, just for the public to know, that as of December, there is 5,671 hours that have been given by volunteers to support our Groton Public School system. So thank you very much for all of those people who do that on a regular basis. Just want to move us, Rita, I've gotten some of your referrals, I, I've got some ideas, and I am going to try to put that together with Mike, and I want to see if that, if that hits all of your concerns. But we have lots of meetings that are coming up, specifically starting next week, there is policy, but that also we're having the joint meeting, which is something that we did last year, to support just conversations with the RTM Education Committee, and then also the Town Council, so we can at least hear sort of where they're coming from, and what they are thinking, at least in terms of budget, but we also had great conversations last year about the CIP projects, so I thought that was actually very helpful.
Just a footnote on the meetings, I'm sorry, there was some confusion, the February 5th Town Council meeting will be here, RTM, and it will be at 6:30. We thought it was at 6:00, and we got some clarification, so on your notes right there, it says 6:00, I believe, so.
And then just remember that February, we do the long march into, before the 28th, where we have to approve the budget, so, yeah. And then maybe we can get back to having regular COW meetings. Anything else? Andrea?
I think that Mrs. Austin, Mrs. Austin told me that the, the art gallery celebration is on the 10th.
February 10?
Great.
I believe, I think it's F5.
F5?
Really nice.
Can we make sure that that gets out? That'd be, thank you, that'd be great. All right, anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn on the table, do I have a second? We have a second, all those in favor. All those opposed, abstained, motion is carried, we are done.